Welcome to our APA or African Planetary Um Association special session of today. So we want to have the session as interacting as possible because we really want to run a discussion around what the APA can do for the community to grow. So this is what you see now is our program for the session. And I'm just checking if we do have Yinka online. I don't see him. So, okay, so I'm gonna do the introduction then. So, welcome everyone. I'm Lucia Marchetti and I'm a senior lecturer at the University of Cape Town here in town. And but I'm here representing the African Planetary Um Association as an advisor sitting on the EXCO. And also I'm a member of the IAU GA 2024 NOC for as a planetary liaison. So as you can see, we will have time to discuss that item as well. So with any further ado, I think I'm gonna pass the award to our president, Susan Murabana, and so that she can tell you a bit about who we are, what we do, what we have done, and what we plan to do in the next future. Okay, Susan, I think I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so that you can share yours. Take it away. Okay, Susan, you are muted though.
Sorry.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening from where you are joining us from. We're very excited to be able to talk to you today as African Planetary Um Association. And thank you African Astronomical Society for giving us a session to interact with our members and potentially new members. I hope you can see my screen and you can see our beautiful logo if you've not had the chance to. I'll just go to the next slide and just talk a little bit about what we are as an association. We are partners with a number of organizations, governments. One key partner who we are affiliate of is the International Planetary Um Society. I can see a few members from the society here virtually, obviously. And we want to negotiate, you know, for our members and represent them in the society so that they can attend, you know, conferences, have access to different products from the international community, but also just interact because planetarians are storytellers. And it's really important to have that opportunity to interact and talk to fellow planetarians across the world. We also think we can play a key role in negotiating discounts, sharing, you know, access to resources like software and useful good resources like what ESO is doing as an institution. But even for our community, make sure we're able to let them have access to, you know, organizations that can share their content or even store their content. And that will hear from one of the beneficiaries of our funded projects, who's done content creation after my quick talk. We also have a partnership with government at the moment. Mainly, the South African government has been a huge supporting, partnering with us and supporting us, especially financially. And that has helped us, you know, grow and have more projects. Sorry, my slide went to the other. And then we are also working with International Astronomical Union. Those are MoU that were signed between IAU and IPS to foster collaborations and that would help us, you know, get, you know, the astronomical research and development through to the community as planetarians play a key role in, you know, disseminating that information, that scientific information to the communities. And as APA, we have partnered with OAD during the funding projects during COVID. And we hope to have more partnership with OAO and OAE. And then obviously today, a big thing for us is a partnership we have with the African Astronomical Society, them being a scientific astronomical organization. We can play a key role in, you know, sharing the hard work that the scientists within our continent and beyond the doing through the planetary work, through education and public outreach. So we do have working groups. And if you're here and you're not yet a member of APA, we invite you to join our community by registering as a member and joining the different working groups. We have the Membership and News Committee, which is led by Yinka. Yinka is our secretary, our executive secretary, and he's based in Nigeria. And then we have the Planetary Um Growth and Capacity Growth, which is led by Nico, who's our treasurer, and he's based in South Africa. And then we have the Planetary Um Content. I think that's a key thing for us. We think we can contribute a lot to the rest of the world by telling our nice stories from the continent through the planetary media. And Marty from South Africa is also running that committee. And myself and Lucia are running the Partnership and Stakeholders Committee. So just to talk a little bit about the activities we've done in the last few years, we have supported some projects, including content creation. There is a planetary movie that is out that was done by a team in South Africa called Starlaw. It's very nice. It's, you're yet to see the trailer, so I won't talk so much about it. But we gave them some financial support to see that the production would happen. We're also, we've also received a planetary donation through an IPS member. It's a used planetary system and we are looking for a home for it. And we want to give support so that wherever it goes, whoever has it will be able to, you know, have a sustainable project moving forward. And then we partnered with OAD during the height of the pandemic to support their COVID response proposal. And we did give funding that supported four projects. One of the projects was a planetary content proposal from North Africa. And we have also just recently started working on the Affordable Planetary Um, which was a project started by African Astronomical Society. So we will have another session about how we can help support the planetary growth in Africa. We want to hear ideas of how that can happen. But I don't want to take too much time. If you're not part of our community, visit our website, our Facebook page, Twitter, and Instagram and reach out to us. I think that's the end of my talk, so I'll stop sharing. I think we said most of today should be a discussion rather than a presentation. And thank you very much. I forgot to introduce myself and Susan Murabana, the current president of African Planetary Um Association.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for representing us today. So I'm gonna go, well, forward. Unfortunately, for the people online, another session is running late, so their room is quite empty. I hope we can get more people for the discussion later on. But for now, I'm gonna give the award to Sally, who is now closing the door because of the noise outside. Thank you, Sally, for that. And Sally, as Susan has already mentioned it, she is one of the producer of the Planetary Um show that we financed through the APA, actually two shows. So I hope you're gonna show us both today and tell us a little bit more about how you did it, what's the journey is. Because really, for the APA, one of our goal is to finally make an effort to represent Africa and the African continent and his heritage into the planetary domes around the world to get, you know, more visibility of what is happening across Africa. Because right now, the shows, as we all know, are kind of American based, most likely, and European basis. So it's good that Africa starts to have a position in that sense. So Sally, the floor is yours. And yeah.
So I can help you to get the presentation maybe? Yeah, it's much more. Ah, sorry. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And then we have to share the screen. Okay. Yeah. Right. Take it away.
Okay, thank you very much, Lucia, Susan, and the rest of APA for giving us this session. And indeed, as you'll find out, for supporting us in creating this content. So I'm just going to briefly discuss the two films that we've produced. And by we, I mean myself, Sally McFarlane. I work at the South African Astronomical Observatory. And I also work with data visualization using the planetary um itself. I work with Daniel Kunma, also working at the observatory. And together, over the last couple of years, we've created the two films that you can see, the posters on the screen there. And yeah, indeed, what Lucia was saying, many years ago, we found we've had all these wonderful developments in South Africa and Africa, but unfortunately, there wasn't enough local planetary um content that celebrated these achievements. So we decided one of the ways was to create this content. And that's initially how we came up with Rising Star. So this is our first content, our first film that we made, a 24-minute production. Let's see if I can, there we go. And Rising Star is all about South African astronomy. It takes you on a journey right from our beginnings with some South African star law, through some of the recent research developments, and takes a look at what the future holds for South African astronomy. And along the way, we look at, we take, we visit various facilities in South Africa, such as the Southern African Large Telescope, as well as Meerkat. And yeah, so that's, that was Rising Star. And we premiered it in, gosh, now this is going back, it feels like forever in COVID times, but that was in 2020, in October. So you can see in the top right-hand corner, there's a picture of Daniel and myself at this premiere. Very exciting, the first time we showed local content to local audience. And there you can see at the Naval Hill Planetary Um. So we had a local release. We also showed it at Sutherland Planetary Um and off in Vaba Planetary Um. So in addition to that, the first exposure to international audiences was at the Dome Under Film Festival last year, and that was in Melbourne. So that was in December. So quite a milestone for us. And most excitingly, tomorrow, we'll actually be going to the planetary um where you'll get to see Rising Star and the other film that we'll be showing you. But just to give you a bit of a teaser for this film, I've got a bit of a trailer next up. Not just next up, next up, this was the most exciting update about Rising Star. And this is just fresh off the press. So in the next week or two, and Susan was alluding to this, we're actually going to be releasing it internationally. So we've released it in South Africa. Now it'll be available for all of African planetary to access and indeed, all of the world to access. So you'll be able to access it from our partnership with ESO. They've got a wonderful free full dome database. In case you haven't seen this before, I really recommend. This is a screenshot taken of where you can go. So if you just Google ESO free full dome database, and there's a lot of free content. So stay tuned to that. As soon as it's released, we'll put that link on the APA website. So now time for our trailer. So that was Rising Star. You'll get to see it tomorrow if you're going to the planetary um. So some of the main aims of these films were to promote African artistic and scientific achievements, but also to promote more, the production of more local content. And that's how we decided to work on Seda Swatswas. Now, Seda Swatswas, we decided it's a bit of a different film from Rising Star. It's 12 minutes, consisting of both animation and live action. And we wanted to tell the story of local communities here in Southern Africa and some of their star law. So Seda Swatswas was filmed on location in the Kalahari. And it tells the story of some of the beliefs of the M'mani peoples and some of their unique storytelling techniques. And you can see one of the unique storytelling techniques over there, where they actually burn into bones. And this is the journey, the story that we share in when we watch Seda Swatswas. And the wonderful thing about working with Seda Swatswas was because we got to work with the community. And the community was a big role in this film itself. And because of that, the film Seda Swatswas is also, it's presented in local dialects of the Nama, as well as Africans, with English subtitles. So just to note, this is also, we are very fortunate in that this was largely funded by the African Planetary Um Association. So we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for that, as well as the National Arts Council and WISEN. So before I speak about this anymore, I'm going to just give you a bit of a taste like I did with Rising Star, and I'll let that speak for itself. We're going to first show you a trailer for Seda Swatswas, and then I'll show you a moment from features, so a bit of a behind-the-scenes look, if we've got time. Great. So we'll get started then, the trailer. That was a wonderful, a wonderful act of the touch, so based in the community there. I'd just like to, that's pretty much all I had today. No more slides, but you'll have the, I hope you all enjoy seeing the two shows we have here tomorrow. And speaking of Seda Swatswas, it is released at some local planetary, but we hope to internationally release it in the next month or two as well. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sally. Exactly, that was our teaser.
Gave us a big task. Be patient. Enjoy it in the next six weeks tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Can we share the other presentation now? Sorry. So that. Thank you. All right, okay. So I would like now to start the discussion time, if we may have some inputs. So two are the items that we would like to discuss this afternoon, as Susan already mentioned. The first one is really how the APA as an association with the little funding that we have available and our structure that we so strongly put forward can support the community growth. So we, as Susan already mentioned, we do have this structure. We do have four working group already established through our membership. So we have people that would like devoted, to devote their time to help build up the community. And the topics are here, you can see the different goals of the different working group. We have, of course, the opportunity to highlight what the planetary um are doing through our platforms, social media, and website, and also through the membership that we have established. We would like to help the community to also gain membership to the IPS, which is the international body for planetary, and so gain access to what you have as a member of the IPS. Then we do have a working group that is looking specifically to the planetary growth, through planetary growth and capacity building, which looks specifically to training the community that would like to host a planetary um and what does it take to get a planetary um? What is the hardware that you need? What is the software that you need? What is the sustainability plan that you have to put forward to actually run a planetary um? Then we do have a working group that is looking to gain fundraising and relationship, and is the working group that I'm devoting my time mostly, which brings in the collaboration with IPS and IAU and strengthen these synergies between this association through also the AFAS collaboration. And then, of course, we have the Planetary Um Content Creation Working Group that really we would like to fund more and see more of this experiment that you, Sally, and Daniel put forward. We know that these experiments are very expensive as well. So I think that the Partnership and Fundraising Committee should also gain more funding to support this type of effort. But this is the structure that we do have in place now. And I know that we have few people here, but we have some more online. So I really would like to open the floor now to see what is missing, what we haven't overlooked, what you think we could do better for our communities. And as you are here, I'm gonna might type. So anyone would like to kick off? Susan, if you are online as well, if you have anything to add? I guess you're muted if you're talking, because I can't hear you, I can't see you.
Yeah, I guess I don't have much to add, but you've put it quite well. Yeah, what can we do for the planetary um community in the continent? How can we, you know, grow? How can we support planetarians that are already existing in the continent? We would like to hear from you, what can we do?
So, does anybody online on here that would like to share some ideas after what you heard that we do, what is our focus? Give you five minutes. Okay, from the audience here, can you?
Sorry, I wasn't around when you were starting, I was in some other interview. But I'm wondering, are these permanent planetary um centers, or you're also looking at mobile planetary um?
We are looking at both, yes. So what we are actually, we realize that, you know, planetary um, established planetary can be very expensive to run and to maintain. So we are looking actually to also promote affordable planetary um solutions. And we are looking at, find the right design that we can also find through our little budget that we have. And so, yes, so we are looking at mobile planetary um as well, yes.
Because I asked that because I had an idea of carrying a mobile planetary um to Uganda. But I realized it was too expensive, so I had to, it's just a mobile planetary, but still it was quite expensive.
I know.
And then I had to cut the fund because I had to now save money for this year and then next year, so that it can accumulate to buy a planetary um.
Yeah.
But of course, other things come in, like content creation, you know, what kind of people you're going to liaise with. I've never used one, for instance.
Absolutely, yes. So you're totally right, and we are actually looking into trying to beat these costs. So there are different design out there already that you can kind of assemble yourself, but of course, you need expertise in place to do that, which we realize not everybody does. And I'm not sure if you have in Uganda where you wanted to establish. But as you can see, so what we would like to do is to use the expertise that we have through our members and also international partners to train the community here to then be able to assemble these affordable planetary um solution. Of course, we have, we're really looking forward also for inputs and help from the community, because all this effort takes time and, you know, and we really need someone that take the lead. But this is in the plan for us. So definitely, you should be in touch. If you are a member of APA already, are you? So you should become a member, and then you will enjoy also the different call for fundings that we will put forward for this type of initiatives. Okay?
All right. So if I say get one, it's a possibility, probably next year. Then, because it's for outreach, right?
Sure.
The next step from there, what kind of said training? Do you give calls or you do online training?
So we want to, we would like to train, because also the software can be very expensive, we would like to train people to use publicly available planetary um software like Stellarium and possibly within the structure that we have, also develop some contents for education, like a classroom content that you can run through as a script, in a sense, that you can use at your planetary um. But all these, you know, require input from the community, and the more we are, the better it is to actually support initiative like yours.
Yes, because... Yes, because like from Uganda, for instance, it will need at least one person to be trained and then that person trains maybe other students and stuff like that. If I bring one, I won't have the time to move around every time with it.
Absolutely, you're right, yes.
Some of the students will have to take up the project.
Yes.
So it's more of a long term.
Yes, it, it definitely is a long term plan. And that's also the sustainability that we were discussing before. We can't, it's not a once off. When you start to, to be a home for a planetarium, then you need to continue input, also have some budget to run it through, through the years and also replacing things that might break. So there are all these different components that we want to provide inputs for and advice for, yes. Thanks for your input, but please sign up for our association, so we can, you can stay in touch and, and give us your input. Yes, and then we, we also have two ends, but go ahead and...
Yeah, partly in, in response to, to the colleague who just talked from Uganda. It's Michael Buckers here from Namibia. And as I had, as I had mentioned yesterday in my talk, we are one little step further than our colleagues in Uganda in the sense that we already have a mobile planetarium acquired, which shall be traveling around hopefully later this year. But we have the very same, the very same issue that each and every other country or each and other group will have, and that's the training of people and the continuity and so forth and so forth. Being this one step ahead, I would, in a sense of, in a sense of being, being a strong believer in collaborations, would be happy to see if we can, and if, if we can set up something like, this may be being the, the test case also for the lessons learned or something like that.
Definitely.
I don't know, as, as you notice, I'm speaking just, just from the top of my head into the loop a little and I don't know exactly where this can lead to. But I think I just wanted to, to pick others' brains to just open up that this is an opportunity in the sense that, well, we're literally at the verge of doing just now what others will be doing in future as well. And just being this one step ahead might be very useful, in, in the sense.
Absolutely. Are you a member of APA already? It's free.
You, you, you will not like my answer, because it's intentionally not.
No, okay, no.
No, 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 don't get me wrong. Our, our problem in Namibia is quite usually that the number of people involved is so small.
Yes.
That being on 50 email lists doesn't help to, to get emails read.
Absolutely, no, 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 I, I agree with you. And you are, you're telling a story that we heard many times in many different countries across Africa and South Africa as well, and some remote areas are the same. We have some few gray people trying to do the best that they can. And, but definitely what you say about the lesson learned and, and, you know, what to do, what not to do, what you have learned, those are important lessons that we want to share with our members. So that's why I'm saying, if you are a member, you can reach out to you and instead of you trying to reach the community, we can be the platform for you to tell your story, basically. So that will be very useful as well, and, and that's what we want to do. Susan, you have your hand raised, so maybe you can go ahead and...
Yeah, I'm enjoying the questions or the observations being raised, especially because there's more mobile planetarians coming in the continent. You know, Namibia, Uganda is planning to get one soon and we're expecting to hear more. I think as the leadership of APA, we've talked about doing training workshops for new or potential planetarium, planetarians. And one of the things is obviously we need to do training for sustainability, for care of your facilities, but also resources. Where can you get resources if you don't have, you know, financing to buy the software and everything? And obviously training on the software, so this is, there's a need for that, as you've had. So perhaps one of the things we can start planning is, you know, how to do workshop, maybe online, but also creating hubs. So we can have hubs where some of these new planetarians can actually physically go to a country that already has a planetarium and, you know, get better, more training. I think like for us in Kenya, we can support Ugandans or South Africa may be able to support Namibia and we can have, you know, physical trainings as well. But I think this means that we should start and have that as one of the items you can do as APA moving forward.
Yeah, thanks, Susan, yes. So I think that, yeah, the, the main input that I'm getting from, from the crowd is that we need to provide training and we need to provide sustainability training as well and, and where to get the sustainable and, and, and beat down the cost of, of getting a planetarium up and running. So these are the inputs that I think, and are the main goals for us as well. So I think we are in line with what the community wants. Anything else that you want to highlight from the crowd? Or here, Iriana? Yes? I think for the online people, they might not hear you, that's why, yeah.
No, I just wanted to, to share the situation that we have in Ethiopia, know that, I don't know, maybe there are other countries that have the same, that are facing the same difficulties. So basically in Ethiopia, there is the planetarium, but it's not in the use. First now, because the engine is, I mean, the motor is stopped working, but then also the whole management, you know, it was under the Addis Ababa University, then it passed to the Ethiopian Academy of Science, I think that's where it is now. If, Alimi, that's correct, you know? And then I think the, the same Academy of Science, Ethiopian Academy of Science doesn't really have capacity to really run the planetarium, you know? So basically we have the planetarium that is not in use and, and also that, that was not, you know, that the, the people didn't benefit much, much of it, you know? So it's also something to think about, you know, like, basically it's, it's a situation that is a bit in the standby, so now you have to get funding for like putting again the, the planetarium in, in, in the functioning mode. I don't know really what is the model of, maybe Alimi told you, want to comment on that if you've seen, because myself, I never even seen the, the planetarium, so I don't know. I mean, how easy or difficult it would be to re-establish it, you know, to work again. But I don't know, maybe you have other examples across the continent that are...
Yeah, no, we, we, we have similar example. I mean, we already mentioned, we did have this donation from one of the company in the US that donated a planetarium, a mobile planetarium to, to Africa in a location in Nigeria. But that hasn't been used, basically. So, and it has been standing there, you know, getting dust. And only now, because we have established the APA, we are trying to get it, you know, moving to a home that people, you know, are asking for and, and would like to use it and have a sort of establishment structure that could sustain the running of the planetarium. It's also, I mean, there are a lot of things that you have to learn to use a planetarium in, in a sense also of, technically speaking, the, the cost of maintaining the hardware and also moving a planetarium around in some area of Africa where the, when the roads are not good, you can break the glass very easily. So this kind of, you know, all this different type of insight that you have to take into account and have a backup plan if something happens are all things that we don't want to line up as part of our mandate. But all these experiences are very important to us and we would like to have a complete database of planetarium that are running and are possibly running, but they have problems and all that. So we really look forward to have inputs from the, from the community. So that's why we encourage everybody to register to our association in Africa. It's free for now, so you can just sign up. It's just because we need to have you on our mailing list that we can reach out to. So please, if you haven't done so, definitely we want you on board. Okay, anything, okay?
Yeah. On another subject regarding the content.
Yes.
What's, what's the plan regarding this? Is it open to people or it's...
Okay, so the content, okay, well Sally has more experience than I am and Daniel, I've seen you online, so I'm sure you can have some inputs here. Yeah, but it's not up anymore, so Daniel, I think it's, it's quiet now, I can see your face now.
I'm here, I'm here. My, my hand was up initially, hi everyone.
Hi, Daniel. We can't see you, but we can hear you, okay? I'm, I'm the only one that can see you.
Okay, no problem. My hand was initially up mainly about the, the training and support, which then was answered in, in the two questions preceding me. Basically just what, what stage are we at in terms of being able to provide this support? Because I think it's, I think it's a, a major one.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
You want to say something about the content creation or shall I?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can talk a little bit about the content creation. I think, I think that it's, you know, it's, it's very exciting. I think that what, what Sally and I have shown is that there's a huge amount of potential in terms of what we have to show in, in Africa. And I think that, that's, you know, it's, it's definitely very exciting, it is very challenging. We've learned a lot, it hasn't been easy. There's been a very steep learning curve, but, but I think that, you know, it's getting easier, the technology is getting better, and, and I think that we can definitely encourage more content creation and, and maybe we can incorporate that into some of the training.
Yes, so that, that you touch a good point. So one of the thing that we have to realize is that, you know, developing a movie like, like they did, they also have appointed a company for the shooting and everything. So it's not like you can do everything in-house. So you, you do need expertise that you need to acquire, you know, and, and source around. So part of the training that we could provide is, okay, what type of, of, of technology you need? What type of support? What are the companies that could help you in the area where you are? And if there are no companies, where, which other country in Africa could do that? And maybe, you know, instead of going for Europe or the US. So there are things that are slowly growing in the community. And, and in terms of content, there are many free content available. I mean, ESO has this huge repository of, of freely available shows that you can run on a full dome, on a, on a dome. But there are, you know, also pictures and we can teach how to create a show using just pictures, statics. All this, you know, is part of the training that we can provide. Again, you need people, you need time and possibly you need a little bit of funding for doing that. And we are getting in the right direction, but we, we will need to continue on this route. And definitely, yeah, we want to have your experience, Daniel and Sally, on, on this side, definitely.
So do you see this happening like a couple of times in a year or...
So we, we want, we want to, we have already a plan to run a workshop this year for, we have lined up a little bit of ideas in terms of software, like Stellarium training, sustainability training for this year. We are thinking of running the format online, so that everybody across Africa could join without having, you know, to travel, even though, you know, we realize that if you can sit close to a planetarians, it's going to be much more effective. But that will require more, more effort in terms of programming. So we are gonna start online first, I think, and we are going to organize something this year as well. At least this is the plan. Okay. Yeah, Jamal? Okay, we, we then move from, okay, last, last?
Lentier things I want to say, possibly, but I'll try to be short, I was in another session, that's why.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no worries.
That's why he was not here. So just speaking about the, the small, I mean, the portable planetarium.
Yes.
And that we have a group, as you know, which is, we call it affordable portable planetarium, that we agree that will be actually a shared group with the APA. Because my concern is, our concern here is in AFAS initially, that should be certainly, of course, your concern, that a planetarium, portable planetarium are extremely expensive if you get them commercially. While if you make that, make them up, it can cause, that was in fact our, our slogan. Slogan was the portable planetarium for $2,000 and no more. And we can, in fact, with the, with the thing which are, we can purchase, we can make it for no more than $2,000 and good planetarium, digital planetarium, which are, which, which are working very well. So I think that if we can focalize a little bit on that kind of, of things for Africa and also for the countries of the world, we'll be winning. So that's a little bit my pitch. I mean, that planetarium should not be as expensive as, I'm talking portable one, of course, the larger one and so on, it's another, it's another scale, another thing. But we should really have for Africa, this kind of planetarium that can be purchased, as I say, but for less than $2,000, and it is possible, and I have showed that in, we have even, I mean, examples for that. If you go the Chinese way, that is, you buy from the Chinese market, you can go for three, $4,000 at very much, most.
Yeah.
If you go to the, to the, to the European, I mean, the European, American market, which, then you will have, you have to put something like 20 or 30,000 dollars. It's just, there is, there is an order of magnitude more. So we should be working on such, I mean, sustainable, I mean, kind of solution which are adapted for Africa and for the other part of the third world countries. And we are, I really want you to realize that the planetarium should not be as expensive as you see them on the catalog. It should be, it could be no more than 2,000 if you do them from, I mean, you, from the, from, I mean, you, you just build them item by item from the various components. So that's, there's more to say about it, but just my pitch was just...
Yes, no, but you, you missed the, the starting point. We actually already mentioned that we, yeah, we, with the example of Uganda that realized how much it can cost to, to buy a planetarium. I mentioned that, yeah, there are affordable planetarium design that you can assemble locally, but you need, of course, to have some training to how that technologically speaking part could work. It depends on the design, okay? Agree to disagree on this, but anyway. The, the idea for, for APA, and, and Susan can confirm this, I mean, we have discussed this, we would like to run a call to, 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 for people that has a design of, that beats the cost to submit their ideas to us and use our budget to develop the system and then share it with who ever needs it. So we want to use our APA budget to develop that idea further. And, and now that, yeah, there is a shared working group, which was already shared anyway, the people were the same. And so definitely we are looking into affordable planetarium solution as well with our budget. So we are moving in this different direction, hardware, software and training. And then, of course, I mean, if you have the expertise, also the content creation on a different level of scale, okay? Okay, now, a very last point, because I think we have to close in five minutes from now. The last part that I wanted to, to, to mention it is the, is the coming, sorry. There you go. Is the, is the, oh, okay, I can see now that your face is in. Yeah, okay, thank you. Is, is, we have this opportunity in 2024 to highlight what we are doing across Africa. For the first time, the International Astronomical Union is coming to Africa ever. And I think that even though it's hosted here in Cape Town, is, is actually a good opportunity for the entire continent to showcase what they are doing. And I think that we, we, we will hear more tomorrow, there is an entire session discussing that. But from the planetarium perspective, there are many things that we can do during the GA or in preparation to that, to grow the community. So this is just to show you, I mean, the International Astronomical Union has different component in its, in its structure and I'm gonna just, oh, sorry, I think, okay. So we do have four main pillars for the IAU, okay? We do the, we have the education office, we have the young astronomer office, we have the communication office, which is, sits in, in Tokyo, and then we have the OAD, of course, the development office. So, and, and, and all revolve around the IAU, which is the, the body for professional astronomers. So all the scientists like me doing science in astronomy and, and data analysis in that sense. So how we can use these opportunity in South Africa and, and in 2024 to highlight the science and, and the, and the communication and the story of Africa using planetarium? So I've just, I'm gonna skip through this, because this is the obvious part. I just want to highlight a few things that we have been doing in terms of established planetarium, okay? So in, in South Africa, we have different digital domes now up and running. One is, of course, this eco-planetarium that are gonna visit tomorrow. But we also have Le Fontaine that is going to be digital soon, and I've seen Roger Dean online, so we are gonna have another one. And I've seen Roger Dean online, so we are gonna have another one. Beautiful planetary that could run not only shows for communication and outreach, but also for data visualization. You have seen here an example of 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 a dataset, an astronomical dataset that we have, we have brought to the Zico Planetary. And you can see, we are just moving through galaxies. Every dot is a galaxy. And we are seeing the connection between the dots, which shows the clustering properties of galaxies. Now, this is very important in this scientific context as well. It's not only for communication, but also for the coming of the new generation of big data science project like LSSD, Mircad SKA, that is coming online. Having these facilities on our side and having the trained, trained people that can ingest the scientific dataset in the dome for scientific exploitation is gonna be very important. And I have to say that Africa is already upfront, thanks to all what we have been doing in this effort. And to to prove you that, last year, there was an an international conference, the ITRPOLI conference with on data visualization. He's hosted in the US and you have, you know, expertise in data visualization all around the globe. And we did have a session on challenges for visualization in immersive environment. And I was there presenting what we were doing at this ecoplanetary in a context like the visualization 2021, which was a conference with a thousand of attendees. So I think we do have an opportunity here to show what we can do from Africa in in this context as well. So I think we should use the GA coming up to highlight all this. And of course, I mean, I've already spoken a lot about, you know, having the research side of planetary use during the GA. We can have a focus meeting on data visualization in immersive environment during the GA, inviting key partners abroad and the science, the scientists that are gonna attend the GA to bring their dataset to the planetary that we have here and and do a sort of a hackathon on how they can start using the planetary and grow the community of the data to dome. Of course, this can be done at this eco, but I would like to see the other digital planetary that will be online to bring in their expertise. Just because we're here, it doesn't mean that we can highlight, you know, the planetary that are across the countries and and highlight what we are doing. In terms of the other aspect that we can be developed and 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 highlighted, you know, we have the education and training aspect, the communication aspect and the development aspect. So I would like, I pitch here some of the ideas. We want to encourage the planetary across Africa to be present at the GA as much as we can, but also highlight opportunity for astrotourism. So how we can bring the astrotourism angle to the GA? How we can real a route for the delegates to visit the other planetary maybe across the country or across Africa in their way back to where they come from? So all these are ideas that I want to throw out there and see if you have any feedback on that in the last few minutes that we have. So I'll open the floor. If you have any question or let me, I need to see the delegate again, so, okay. Any anybody from the audience? Of course, the there is, I can speak for the research side of it because I'm more, you know, an expert on that. We'll need preparation since now, really. We need to build a core of people that will build up towards the the symposium that that if we can and we can succeed to have during the GA would be a wonderful opportunity to also strengthen the collaboration between the IAU and the planetary board through the IPS collaboration as well. So Sally?
Sorry, can you just explain the education and training? The you mentioned that.
Yes, so I I mean, I just mentioned that there because during the GA, there is always the division day. And and, you know, the different divisions that look especially to education in astronomy. So I thought that if planetary across Africa have a program for education in their, in their, you know, local environment, where maybe the university, there is no university, but as an institution, they have a planetary. We could, you know, bring this opportunity to them and say, look, submit an abstract for this type of session or highlight them during those sessions. So that was an idea that I had, but you know, that can be built upon. Anybody else that has any input on this? Roger, sorry, I see you are online. I I did mention you. I don't know if you have anything on the data science aspect of this. Okay, on the audience as well?
Like in the essence of infrastructure, like in the cities, you take the outside and then show that, I think it is very important if it is included in the educational system. Because at Addis Ababa in Ethiopia, we have tried to use for the outreach program. But the problem is what you have raised earlier. The person who have trained on the planetary, you may get or not get. And even you have to pay him. And that they unnecessarily put it in the museum rather than putting in the university. That is also the problem. If the the society is well, of course, progressed, I think it is helpful. But it has to be included in the strategic plan to reach outside. That is my comment.
Okay, thank you, yes, you, it's a very good point. Yeah, we need to integration and the training and the sustainability of that is is very important, yes, to 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 have it happen. Yes, the levy, sorry, I need the microphone again.
Okay, thank you. What I would like to add is about education and training. You put NAC in the Planetary Initiative, we encourage planetary across Africa. Yes, I think also you can put the NOC because the NOC also organize basic training.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, good point, yeah, the NOC, sorry, I I should have mentioned the NOC as well. Thank you very much, yes. Now, definitely, we we do need to 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 discuss a little bit more how the NOC can be involved in this. And I'm sure they will have their own strategies. And I hope that through the through the GA NOC, really, the the organizing committee that are engaging with the different IU structure across Africa, we will have that type of conversation already, you know? So yes, but very good point. Okay, Mirianna? And then I think I'll I'll leave the closing remarks to Susan, unless there is anything online coming up. Mirianna?
Yes, I just wanted, well, first, I mean, really, thanks for all the summary. I I was coming in and out, but what I heard was really, really good, yeah.
Thank you.
And there are, there is so much progress, you know, that has been done. I just wanted to mention, I mean, for for the association, but then in general for for Afas and different committees that are there, that under the IU Division C, that is focused on education, outreach and heritage, we do have the regular newsletter, no?
Yes.
So previously, it was a bit more, let's say, conservative way of just reporting and not many people were really reading it. We now started changing a bit the scope of newsletter, like sending, dividing first, you know, like the part of announcements and then the summary, basically, of the activities done under different commissions, working groups and so on. So this part that is related and then that is distributed to all members.
Members, yes.
The announcements that are there basically are just a quick note with the link, no? So we can use also that because for now, I mean, we just had one newsletter until now in that way. And now in April, we'll be coming the second one. And I'm the one taking care of, like, you know, now working on the newsletter. So I mean, for for the general Afas community and then, as I said, all the committees and so on, we can use that for really announcing the things that are important because under the, I mean, the IU Division C, there are quite a lot of members, you know, across the whole world. So so not very often, we have actually news from Africa. So so I will be then distributing next time also with the offices, the four offices of the IU, we had recently meetings. So definitely, the offices will be sending their announcements.
Yes.
But then I think I can discuss with the steering committee and we can extend that to to like Afas, just, you know, like hot topics and announcements that that are there, yeah.
Yeah, good, good to know, yeah. I mean, if we do have done some news from the APA side, we can also share it with you. I I didn't know you were involved in that directly, so it's gonna be easier, yes, it's a connection. Thanks for highlighting that. Okay, so unless there is anybody online, I don't see any hand raised. So I think I'm gonna close the session. I'm gonna leave Susan to for the final remarks as our president. Just let me stop sharing, sorry, I, the computer is acting up. Sorry, I. Did we? Okay. All right, so we can, we can see you, Susan, if you if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, I think we didn't have enough time to discuss more about, you know, the upcoming general assembly with IU, but also how we can work together to support the growth and continuity of the planetary world. Obviously, very happy to see Jacob and Jane join us. And they've done a really good job in Ghana and continue to to grow, you know, the planetary world there. There's a resource of people here for you to join with. But I just wanted to encourage you to send any ideas to us. I think Lutendo can share our official email address. Any ideas, any any thoughts you have for support or the future? And we'll get back to you. And if you're not a member of APA, please join because we have a lot of opportunity for you within the continent, but also with the International Planetary Society community. So we look forward to, you know, interacting with you again. And thank you for such a lovely session. I look forward to listening to your comments or reading them in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Susan, thanks everyone for attending. Glenn. Can we see the chat? I think there were a lot of comments in the chat, but I can't find it. All right. Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Sorry, we we didn't realize there was a chat going on, so we are reading it now. Okay. Any further reason, I guess, okay, yes? Right, yeah, the IP membership. Okay, thank Glenn, yes, we will need to update that as well, yes? And link it to our website as well, Glenn. I think it's important, yeah, well done. Yes.
Yes, we have submitted, we have submitted to the Festival Borneo and Jena recently, as well as the IPS, unfortunately, that's not going to be taking place. And the local film film festival in here in Africa, so.
Yes, so we we did try indeed, well, you did try. Sorry, I don't take credit for that, you did all the work. Thanks, Glenn, though, very, yeah, good question. And, okay, and then, 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 yeah. Glenn, we will talk a little bit more about the planetary database, okay? Because I think that is important that we link it through our website as well. And please, everyone, just join them, yeah, join us. And the 100 year celebration of IPS definitely is something that we would like to highlight from Africa as well somehow. We just need to to have that dedicated discussion yet. We have a lot to discuss, unfortunately. And that's keep a little bit of our mind, but yeah, we will. Good. Lutendo, I'm taking from granted that you are copying all these notes for our for our notes and for the sake of the rest of the exec, please. So keep track of this chat, okay, Lutendo? I'm guessing you you will do it.
Noted, noted, yes.
Thanks, everyone.
You can save the chat. You can save the chat.
Can we hear Glenn?
I just wanna, can you hear me now?
Oh, okay, now we can hear you, yes.
I just wanted to say you can save the chat history before you close the the Zoom session. And then you have all the links and info.
All right, yes, it's just that we are on the conference computer, so can we save the chat? Yes, we are gonna save the chat, thank you, Glenn.
Yeah, you don't you close the Zoom session, it's gone.
I know, I know, I know, so save it now. Thank you very much, Glenn. Okay, thanks, everybody online as well.
Nice seeing you.
Thanks.
Take care. Bye bye.